Ladies and gentlemen, I want to put before you our future. So they're right here and they just have had outstanding accomplishments and we're very proud of them, their folks are very proud of them, we want, you'd be very proud of them, we want to honor them this evening. I'm going to read a resolution. The common council of the city of Scottsburg, resolution number twenty twenty-three dash R dash five. A resolution of the city of Scottsburg honoring the Scottsburg High School Jobs for America graduates, JAG students. Whereas the Jobs for American Graduates, JAG program is state, is a state-based national nonprofit organization dedicated to helping high school students of promise of experiencing challenging or traumatic life experiences achieve access, achieve access, success through graduation. Whereas JAG is a resiliency-building workforce program that helps students learn and demand employable skills and provides a bridge to post-secondary education and career advancement opportunities. Currently, there are one hundred and thirty JAG programs available throughout Indiana. Whereas JAG students receive adult mentoring while in school and one year followed counseling after graduation. Indiana's program consistently graduates approximately ninety-five percent of participants and many students choose to continue their education after high school. The JAG program is funded through grants provided by the Indiana Department of Workforce Development. Whereas Scottsburg High School is proud to have a JAG program with many active participants. The Scottsburg JAG participants recently had the opportunity to join more than eight-hundred students from twenty-four states in Orlando, Florida, in April for a fun-filled and action-packed three days at the National Career Association's second National Career Development Conference. Whereas students from JAG programs in twenty-four states traveled to Orlando to compete in competitions ranging from business plan creation and public speaking to creative problem-solving and interviewing. They also participated in workshops on such topics as dressing for success and resume writing and attended two, a two-day career expo. Whereas through the team's hard work and determination, the Scottsburg High School JAG program received national recognition and brought home pride for themselves, brought home pride for themselves and their school. Whereas, I want, where now, that is it, Ashia?
Asia.
Asia Alcorn, Natasha Williams. So here's, here's Asia Alcorn, where's Natasha Williams?
Right there.
And Connor Bartosz, Connor Bartosz. Place fourth in the nation, in the nation for projected-based learning. Christina Owens, where's Christina? Right there. And Christina Owens received an outstanding chapter recognition on behalf of Scottsburg High School JAG program. Now, therefore, be resolved by the common council of the city of Scottsburg, Indiana, as follows. Section one, the city of Scottsburg congratulates the Scottsburg High School JAG program on their accomplishments in two thousand and twenty-three and wishes the program participants much success in their future endeavors. Section two, the learned treasure of the city of Scottsburg shall transmit copies of this resolution to the JAG program coordinator for distribution. Section three, the resolution shall be effective from and after adoption by this council in compliance with Indiana Code thirty-six dash four dash six dash fourteen. Passed and adopted on this May twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three by a vote of, and do we have a motion to pass this resolution?
Make the motion.
Christian Evans makes the motion, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, Chris Albertson second, he, my right here, my left, Chris, let's hardly hear his voice. Okay, if all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, thank you very much. So it passes by five to oh, and so can we give our students a round of applause? All come around, our students get a picture, can we? And we have certificates for them as well.
That's what I'm.
Yeah.
They're all separate.
Let's go around front, let's go around front, get our pictures taken with us and let's hand them out to them. Christine Owens, that's you. Congratulations. Absolutely. Ashley Alcorn.
Hey.
I'm sorry, congratulations, thank you for all your hard work.
Absolutely.
Connor Bartosz, how you, thank you, great job, great job, great job. And Natasha Williams, congratulations, thank you for all your hard work. Let's, let's all, congratulations, come on down here, let's all get our pictures taken. Our folks.
Where is Jane? Please handle. Jane.
Reagan here.
Cheeseburgers.
One, two, three, one more. Okay. All right, I've got one, hold on, I got one.
Okay.
Okay, one, two. Okay.
Woo-hoo. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And graduates and undergraduates here, this is how your city works as well, so you're going to see, you have a mayor, you have a city council, so this is how democracy works, so everybody can join in. Our next, on our agenda is the approval of minutes of the May eighth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting. If you have read through the minutes and see no, see no cause for changes, we'll take a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Rick Mans makes the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Christian Evans seconds, any Congress questions, concerns? Congress members say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, thank you very much, okay. Next thing we have on our agenda this evening is the public comment period. Is anyone here, first off, in here reading this. The Scottsburg City Council accepts public comments. Individuals wishing to address the council will be asked to come forward and state their name for the record. Each person will have five minutes to voice their opinion. Their log should focus on issues and not be used to target city employees or elected officials. This is the time, if you're a citizen of Scottsburg and you've got dogs barking too loud or if something that you don't, you didn't see need to address, this is your time to be able to voice what you would like to say. Is there anybody here that would like to come forward and state your name and tell council what's on your mind? Only once? Okay, yes.
Um, I don't live in Scottsburg city limits.
Okay.
So I cannot speak correct.
This, this has, this has to do with Scott, within the Scottsburg city limits, yes. Anybody else within the Scottsburg city limits, yes?
So if we're in the county, we can't speak about, if we're, if we're not in Scottsburg city limits, we can't speak.
Your whole thing's going to come up later in the, in the agenda.
Later, okay.
So, so that's, this is, this is, this is every council thing, we want, if you have it, if you want to say something to the council, this is your time to speak about things going on in your city of Scottsburg.
Mr. Mayor, could we give them a little time before we consider the ordinance, right before the ordinance, so that they could speak? We have loud people to speak.
Absolutely.
Like the last meeting, I believe the gentleman was, lived outside the city limits and spoke due to a different thing, so right before the, we go to the ordinance, I, I think the citizens of Viana have a right to, to speak.
And ladies, if this is Rick Mans and he is the president of council, okay, so.
Yes, typically, the public comment would be if it's something that's not on the agenda.
Right.
We have the resolutions and the ordinance, some other things that come up on business, it'd be something that's not on the agenda and it would, it doesn't have to be someone that's a resident of the city. Right, and, and we just want to make sure that they realize that you can speak when that comes up. Does that, does that help?
Okay. There you go, there you go. Okay, anybody else would like to speak? Okay, here again, we'll close our public comment period, now we'll go on to new business. Our first resolution is twenty twenty-three dash R dash three, resolution of the city of Scottsburg adopting a fiscal plan establishing a definite policy for services. We'll read through this. You're okay with this, we'll accept the motion to accept resolution twenty twenty-three dash R dash three.
Make the motion.
Christian Evans makes the motion, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Chuck Rose seconds, any questions or comments about this? Congress members say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, thank you very much. The next thing is reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirteen, an ordinance annexing continuous territory into the city of Scottsburg. Josh, I'm going to hand that down to you.
And I'm going to defer to Mr. Duncan here in the front row, who's here on behalf of the petitioner. We had the first reading and the public hearing at our last meeting, so this would be action for the second reading and final reading if so desired. If there's any amendments or any changes to the ordinance, now would be the time to make, I'll start with Matt, if he's got anything to add.
Uh, no, I was just going to recap, we had the public hearing at the last council meeting. Annexation ordinance got adopted on first reading at the last meeting, so if you all do adopt it on second and final reading today, our next step then will be to record it with the county recorder, file it with the appropriate local and state offices, and according to our timeline, the annexation will not take effect until January one, twenty twenty-five, because all are part of the properties located within a fire protection district, so. That's all I have.
And for you who does not know what this is, this is the Christianity property west of Scottsburg.
I just wanted to know what you say, I'm like you.
No, I can hear well, I'm just kidding you.
Well, I'm not.
This is not, if you're here for Viana, this is not considered the Viana one. This is a whole different.
But you're annexing in property, right?
Correct.
This, this borders the city limits.
Can I ask a question? What's the procedure for annexing in property?
So this is a, what's called a super voluntary annexation, which is about the only viable annexation allowed under Indiana law. So the property owner has came to the city as requesting to be annexed into the city. So there's a petition that's filed, a public hearing, uh, on ordinance, a resolution has to be passed, there's publication requirements, uh, it's about a six, four, five-month process on the quick end, even for a super voluntary annexation.
Are the people that's included in that annex, are they notified?
Well, like I said, this is a voluntary, so the people that own the land are the ones that have requested the annexation.
And I'm, I'm the attorney representing the property owner.
It's only one piece of property.
Yeah, it's, it's all contiguous with each other. There's, uh, there's two different parcel numbers, but they're right by each other.
Owned by the same person.
Owned by the same people. And is it already connected to the city limits?
It's connected, yeah. There's a requirement in state law that it's got to be certain amount of contiguous with the existing city, so.
You cannot, I think we said this at the planning commission and there was a misunderstanding, you cannot annex unless you touch this city.
Oh, I know, that's, that's why I wondered if that was the case.
So unless we're board, we cannot annex.
And there, just for clarification, there is a legal description attached to the annexation ordinance that shows the new annexed territory.
Can I just ask how many acres it is?
Six acres. It's a, it's a, it's fifty-eight point one-six-four acres.
And it's zone commercial, if I remember right.
Light industrial, and so the petitioner is asking for the zoning designation to stay as it is, so.
Does council have any questions for Mr. Duncan?
No.
Congress members, we'll entertain a motion to go forward and pass ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirteen.
I'll make the motion.
Chris Albertson makes the motion to pass, is there a second?
I'll second.
No, hold with seconds. Questions, comments, concerns? Congress members, all members say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, thank you very much.
I'll go ahead and make the motion.
Motion to suspend the rules. Christian Evans on third and final reading.
I'll second.
Second by Rick Mans. Questions, comments? Congress members, all members say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. So we can now take the motion to go forward and pass on third and final reading. Is there a motion to pass on third and final reading?
Make the motion.
Chuck Rose makes the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Christian Evans seconds, questions, comments, concerns? Congress members, all members say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, thank you very much. Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirteen passes on second, third reading.
Thank you all.
Mr. Duncan?
Once I get the recorded copy of it.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you. Hey, Jane, that one will need recorded.
Recorded, yes, okay, thank you.
Okay, the next thing we have on our agenda this evening is resolution twenty twenty-three dash R dash four, a resolution accepting certain street rights away dedicated to the city of Scottsburg. So where's, where's, Josh, where's that at?
So this is the Timber Meadows, or Hidden Meadows, Hidden Meadows.
That's just.
Hidden Meadows, the, all the lots have been sold, the property is, I think, almost fully habited at this point in time, so the earlier roadways within that section have already been adopted by the city, I think in two thousand and twenty, so this is the last little jaunt, the road that kind of runs off to the west, I believe on top of my head, so this is the last street within that division and it has the dedication language, it was on the plat, we just do this as the official step, so it gets recorded and the county knows to not tax anyone since it's a public roadway and then for grants to get the paving, this is basically on our inventory for state purposes.
So this, this, this is the last part of that, that Hidden Meadows, Hidden Meadows is, you go down Coke Lane where the old pizza used to be, make a left going to there, that and gone back to the bank and developed, purchased that, developed that all out, then he purchased the lot next to it and built another eleven houses. So that's all then sold and completed, so the city's now taking that over and it will be put on state inventory. So, you know, so just to give you up to date what's going on there. So we'll accept a motion to go forward with twenty twenty-three dash R dash four, accepting this, this street. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Christian Evans makes the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Chris Albertson seconds, questions, comments, concerns? Congress members, all members say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, thank you very much.
Jane, that gets reported too.
That gets reported, okay.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, could we move the, move the agenda and do E and F?
E and F.
And leave, right, D to the end.
Absolutely. Compliance with statement of benefits, personal property of Scottsburg Solar Array LLC.
Yeah, this is just a, uh. This is the annual certification that's required by Indiana.
Oh, something real quick to knock out before we get to the topic.
So this is the action, finding, accepting the compliance statements and authorizing the mayor to execute.
So there's a motion to go forward.
I'll make that motion.
You can do it together, if you want to do it in one motion, that'd be fine.
Just, E and, through E and F.
Yeah.
In one motion, I'll make that motion.
This is the Scottsburg Solar Array LLC and.
San Jose.
And San Jose LLC. Okay, so we have a motion by Rick Mans before the compliance.
I'll second.
Seconded by Christian Evans, any questions, comments? Congress members, all members say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes it. Okay. Now, we have D, the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fifteen, an ordinance admitting the zoning maps, the unified zoning ordinance now in effect for the city of Scottsburg, Indiana. And this is where the Viana is, so let's open this up for public.
I can give a little spiel real quick if you want me to. So Jeff and Jerry Mills are here, they're the owners of the property, their engineer, Jonathan McCoy is also here, so if you guys have any questions, feel free to direct them at them, or I could also take some. Basically, this is about thirty-two acres on the corner of Viana Road and three fifty-six, this is coming to you guys because of the two-mile fringe you adopted in two thousand and twenty. So this does have a favorable recommendation from the advisory plan commission, but it took two meetings to get there and there were some concerns about density and utilities, which would, the utilities would come at a later meeting for ABC. But just so you guys know, there will be twenty-four single-family homes built if this is passed and eighteen patio homes or duplexes. There's also a commercial tract and a detention area with green space, so if you guys have any questions, that's all I have.
Can you repeat that, twenty-four?
Twenty-four single-family lives.
And eighteen duplexes?
Yes.
And that's everything?
And commercial. Yeah, there's a commercial tract as well up the front.
So about, about how much land?
Of the twenty-four.
Per house, it's a little over.
Small and four. Right.
They're engineering correct here.
Now, are these done, your rentals? Let's.
That's, um, I think if the developers want to speak, they can.
Let's, let's, let's council ask the developers or, or address.
Yeah, if the developers have any comments they'd like to make and then you guys can ask any questions and then turn it over to the audience would be kind of how it typically would be.
Jerry, I've got a letter from the superintendent of schools, representing school board, he couldn't make it tonight, he called it easy, and if you would read this, it's, it's any concerns that the schools have, no matter what you're doing, because it does affect the schools very much, so thank you.
So you want me to read this?
Yes, yes, that's from the superintendent.
Okay, so this is from Scott County School District Two, first and foremost, Scott County School District Two wants to be a, wants to coordinate, coordinate, co- colla- cooperate.
Collaborate, collaborate partner, they would like to be a collaborative partner.
In our community's growth, we would never want to make statements that would negatively impact our community's growth, however, we do thank as a responsible member of the committee to at least share our thoughts about the proposed project, as while it will create opportunity, those opportunities will not come without some challenges. Our three biggest questions are around anticipated numbers of new students, the timeline of development, the construction for the new subdivision, and whether we will receive tax revenue in a timeline relating to the new subdivision. This project is not a residential tip project. First, in regard to capacity, currently at Viana Finley Elementary School, we are, we are at our near grade level capacity at each grade level and annually see an influx of transfer requests from students and families that live outside the Viana Finley elementary zone of enrollment. Scott Two just reviewed and revised our transfer policy and capacity guidelines for our four elementary schools. Our number, our target numbers and range per grade level are as follows. Okay, grade, kindergarten, uh, target's twenty, range is four, sixteen to twenty-four. First grade target is twenty, range is sixteen to twenty-four. Second grade twenty-one, range is seventeen to twenty-five. Third grade range is twenty-three, our target is twenty-three, range is nineteen to twenty-seven. Fourth grade, the target is twenty-six and they're twenty-two to thirty. Fifth grade is twenty-six and they're twenty-two to thirty. Currently in Viana Elementary School, for the twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four school year, our enrollment numbers are as follows, with student-staff ratios as shown. Kindergarten forty-eight, sixteen to one. First grade sixty-five, twenty-one point six to one. Second grade sixty-three, twenty-one to one. Third grade sixty, twenty to one. Fourth grade sixty-eight, twenty-seven point seven to one. Fifth grade forty-nine, uh, with twenty-four point five to one. Therefore, we currently have some room for transfers by grade, but it is very limited, especially after the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year, assuming the current numbers hold. Note, Viana Finley Elementary School also offers pre-K program and currently, Viana Finley Elementary School has four hundred and seven students enrolled in two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three. Scott Two's options to consider regarding a new subdivision close to Viana Finley Elementary School, no particular preference or order at this point in time, is first, build additional classrooms, build additional classrooms on the Viana Finley Elementary School building. We're currently adding two rooms, starting this fall and have enough room to likely build four more classrooms at Viana Finley Elementary School before running out of physical footprint at the campus. Two, consider moving fifth graders from the district to Scottsburg Middle and move, and move to a middle school format, that is fifth and eighth grade, fifth through eighth grade. Doherty and Floyd currently have this. Three, redistrict the zone of enrollment boundaries in the district, which would be designed so that this new subdivision could be part of the Scott, uh, Scottsburg Elementary School's zone of enrollment, which would alleviate the student capacity concerns at Viana Finley Elementary School. Fourth, or any combination of the three above points. The next available depth capacity for the district would be around twenty twenty-five to twenty-six. Scott Two has always worked hard to be a tax-neutral in our board issuances, for complete transparency, the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six bond issuance, with this new subdivision and anticipated projects would likely not be tax-neutral. In conclusion, we are optimistic about any community growth and will work hard to overcome any challenges that any growth anywhere in Scott County would bring to the district. So ladies and gentlemen, that is from Scott County School District Two, presented by school board member Greg Zellman.
Mayor, can I add one comment there? And Rick, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I talked to Dr. Slaton about some of these issues and the, the comment about moving fifth grade to the middle school was not just Viana Finley, they were talking about doing that district wide, in other words, you know, all the elementaries sending fifth grader, and, and that's just, that's just talk, I mean, it's not anything beyond that right now, but it's a possibility, but it wouldn't be just Viana Finley, it would be all the elementaries going to the middle school, making that a, a five through eight configuration.
And they've talked about that before.
Right, they have, yeah.
Adding a wing.
Yeah, that's what he told me, but I, I just wanted to make sure everyone understood that, that.
Yes, that, that's right, and like Mr. Man said, it would also include building a wing on for the, all, fifth grader, all to govern it, yes. Yeah, you're right.
In the past five years or so, maybe ten, whatever, uh, school populations, has it grown, stayed the same or declined?
Well, Chuck, you could help me out on this. I'd say it's about the same, it's, it's, it's pretty close to this, it's not very, very much either direction over the last few years.
What's anticipation, ten years from now?
Well, I don't know, it's hard to say.
Well, population's pretty well stayed, not the same as in the.
Yeah. Of course, Viana Finley's a very popular elementary school and we have kids that want to go there and the way it is right now, they can, of course, when Chuck and I were in school, if you lived in town, you went in town, if you wanted to go to Viana, your parents moved to Viana, but those rules are changed where you can go to any elementary you want, and even high school. So that's, calls it overloaded Viana because it's a very livable school and a lot of kids want to go there. But as far as making a prediction, ten years down the road, I, I, you know, the last few years, it's pretty well stayed, uh, not up, not down, it's stayed pretty even. Thank you.
I want to give the city council time to ask any questions to the.
The developer wanted to speak, I think he wanted to speak.
I'm not going to. Yeah. Oh, I.
You know, the, there's, there's twenty lots that are quarter acre lots inside.
Can you stand up and face us, because I can't hear you.
If you might just stand up.
Maybe over there.
You know, you guys see the layout, there's twenty lots that are quarter acre lots that, you know, have the main entrance off of three fifty-six, you can come in, so those, those homes there are in the sixteen, seventeen hundred square foot, we're looking at the two sixty-nine to less than three hundred, try to keep under that three hundred dollar sale price, three hundred thousand, so that is the twenty houses in there, there's another street that cuts off to the left, that will be duplexes, patio homes is what we're looking at, that more of a, you know, it's, it's HOA kind of managed with all the yards and in all the trash, everything is managed by the company, not by the homeowner, from the renter and that stuff there, but the, then there's four additional lots, Al Home three fifty-six, that are two plus acres, uh, that, you know, bigger homes or, you know, have more room to build a larger home, so that's, and then, of course, then the commercial area is up north in the front, we have that, so right now, John can get into the entrance of that, all coming off of three fifty-six, and then we have the recantory in the back there, so, um, if you want to come to me with some of the utilities or any questions Joe to have on that stuff.
So yeah, my name is John before, I'm a civil engineer, uh, my company is JLM Engineering, um, here on behalf.
Uh, my company is J L M Engineering, um, here on behalf of the owners, the Mills Brothers. Uh, we had two really productive meetings with the planning commission and the folks here, uh, from Vianna. Uh, we feel like this is a, where we're at now with this draft of the development plan, um, is very reasonable as far as density goes, and access, and safety, and, and all those things you look at when you, when you develop a, you know, a residential, uh, community like this, with some commercial use as well. Uh, but, but as far as utilities go, just, uh, to give you an idea, as far as access, we do, I did speak with the, uh, Scott County Regional Sewer District, and, uh, they did confirm that they have capacity in line, uh, across three fifty-six, which we'll have access to, uh, through the right-of-way of three fifty-six, uh, to access that line. So, uh, as far as sewers go, and I knew that, I know that was a concern early on, um, so we will have, uh, capacity for this development as far as, as wastewater goes. Um, water is also available there with Stucker Fork Water is just to the east. Um, and the, the city has water that comes down from the north as well. So we do have water supply, ample water supply for the development, uh, as well. Uh, we did revise the, the main entrance, as Jeff mentioned, off of State Road three fifty-six. We've centered that on the property. Uh, of course, that NDOT will have to approve that. Um, it, it's a commercial grade, what we call commercial grade entrance. It'll be very wide with, with sweeping, uh, radiuses, you know, uh, and deceleration lanes to allow traffic to get off of the, the highway. Uh, it is a forty mile an hour zone there that goes to a thirty, uh, at the school. Uh, so that, that helps out as far as your, you know, your site, uh, stopping distances and that, and that thing, that kind of thing, when you're, uh, dealing with some additional traffic on the roadway that this, uh, development would produce. We, we, we've created a plan that, that has lots of green space in it, um, in the sixty to sixty-five percent range of total green space area. Uh, up in the northeast corner, if you have a plan in front of you, is a, that is a, like a dedicated green space park area, also set aside for, uh, managing the stormwater off of this site, um, that will detain, you know, the excess runoff due to the addition of the streets and the homes, um, and will control that. That's, that's really kind of a summary in a nutshell of the development. And I will bring up a few things, just because we want to be transparent. There's, there are some old, uh, gap, underground gas tanks up at the intersection of Vianna in three fifty-six. Um, the Mills Brothers have, they're in cooperation with River Hills Economic Group. They are, uh, working on getting a grant that will allow them to assess those underground tanks, uh, with a phase-one and phase-two environmental assessment. Um, those are all very strictly, those reports and assessments are strictly regulated by EPA. Um, and so those will be reviewed, and a determination will be made if those tanks will need to totally come out, as well as the soil remediated around those tanks. But they're, they've got the ball rolling, uh, as far as taking care of that concern on those buried, uh, gas tanks. I did want to mention, uh, just a couple bullet points here that's, that's in your comprehensive plan as far as development goes and goals, uh, for the area. Um, one is, uh, it's in chapter two of your comprehensive plan, strategy one. Bullet note says, uh, you know, we desire to encourage residential growth that will increase the population, provide a foundation for future commercial and industrial development. Uh, in strategy two, bullet point states, uh, we want to encourage diverse housing types that accommodates all ages, income levels, and lifestyles. So, you know, we believe with this, this proposed development plan, that it does accomplish those goals that you clearly laid out, uh, in your comprehensive plan, uh, as far as, you know, increasing the population, providing a diverse, um, set of housing, um, that will allow for different ages and income levels, uh, in this community. So that's, I think, is that, is there anything else that... So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer any specific questions that you have.
Along Vianna Road there, I notice an existing structure there at the corner with the house and, uh, the garage. But going back to the, uh, to the north along Vianna Road, is there a, there's some trees, some growth there currently. Is all that going to remain the same? Is that going to be cleared out, or what's that going to look like along there?
I think a lot of that along the right way will be cleared out, yeah, to make it safer, you know, for traffic to be able to see coming out of that property.
Uh, no, I'm talking about Vianna Road, that runs to the north, uh, west side of the property.
Well, you know, we don't have any accesses proposed that connect to Vianna, and that's, it actually provides a buffer, you know, a natural landscape buffer between...
Well, some of that, there's going to be a...
I think we'd like to keep, I mean, I don't want to speak...
Well, we have talked about, yes, about leaving the buffer zone, especially down the north side, and then we could do that some of Vianna, but the lots, you know, it'd be the backside of the accesses.
Right.
And the backside of the duplexes too.
Right.
It would be, you know, face, place in the back of it.
The only entrance in the east is going to be all three fifty-six.
Correct, yeah, yeah. And that'll, again, that'll have to be NDOT approved, that, that is, but we feel like that's the, that's the safest and most practical access to the property.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, you, you said Stucker Fork has service there, so does the city, and we know who would provide the water.
I mean, I, we're on the north side of that, I was, I was, I was...
Yeah, I specifically talked with, uh, Randy Niedler with Stucker Fork, uh, and he indicated they had a large main just to the east there, like a twelve-inch main. Scottsburg, I'm not sure exactly where, where their, where that service terminates to the north. Um, but Stucker Fork, I know definitely has the capacity there.
Typically, those, those areas are dedicated, none of the other.
But the, that's what I, I, I just...
Yes, yeah. Yeah, three-phase electric is also...
Right, and that would be through the city.
Scott, yeah, with more than enough capacity.
Yeah, but I, I was, I was trying to get my head around who provides utilities.
Yeah.
You said, you asked one of my questions about regional sewer district, they, give me the thumbs up. They have the capacity, not sure about the water, but, but the city would provide the electrical service, correct?
With the electric, we would have the IOAs that send the water, uh, there, and...
Yeah.
And Stucker Fork's giving us the influence of wastewater. So we'll take that down, huh?
Has there, has there been any discussion about incentives for infrastructure?
That wouldn't apply to us.
Okay, well, I, I mean, if we had some of the utilities, could they, could they, and say the IOAs were scary. You, uh, you described the, the different types of housing there. Will, will always be owner occupied, or will some of these be rental?
The, the home, the single-family homes, they'll all be sold in, you know, owner, owner occupied. The duplexes, townhomes, that patio home type, that would be, we, the company would own them.
They would, you would own them, it'd be companies, whoever that might be.
That's, yeah.
Is, is any of this, I, I mean, obviously, the estate homes wouldn't be, but are, are any of these, uh, homes subsidized anyway? To any subsidized housing in there?
Well, it is, right, but...
In this period.
A rough number on that, we're, you know, trying to keep the budget under three hundred thousand a house, and, you know, two sixties, two seventies, up to three, and depending on the amenities that we, you know, put in home, that would be the sub price of it.
Uh, and, and I, I guess one other question I have, uh, kind of directed toward the school's letter. Uh, you, you have an idea on the timeline, because apparently that's an issue for the school.
Well...
Do you have an idea on that?
A long time, time. Compared to some of the other neighborhoods around, around here, it would, it's, I don't have nothing, you know, I don't have a detailed plan like that, but I know it would take, uh, it'd take a lot of time just getting the infrastructure design put in, and then you can only sell as many of buyers are out there, and it, that would take, that's going to take some time. I don't know if we're talking two years or three years, but it, it would be that and perhaps longer. I don't, you know, it's, it's, it's going to be a long time for that ever mature, would be mature.
We're not going into developer thing at one time, if that's what you're asking.
Well, I, I was just curious.
All right, you're right, right.
Some of these things going pretty quick, and I understand, you know, why developers want to do that, but I, I just, you know, it appears that school did, of course, trying to, trying to alleviate some of their concerns.
Do you have a, a plan for, I know some subdivisions have homeowners associations, kind of keeps track of what, how the property's going to be developed, how it's being maintained, and just free, private, or something.
Yeah, we have that, of course, and all the interest areas, we have to manage all that. The green space will be mentioned at, as well as the duplexes, but the restrictions on the, when we get deeper into it as we sell a new home, there's pretty, we would like to have a, a lot of, a lot of strict standards on, on, you know, what's allowed, letting in the yards and et cetera like that.
You said owner occupied, is there any, someone that is going to be allowed within the HOA zone?
I don't, I, no, 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 sir.
I didn't, I didn't hear what you, what you said. You're only, only contractors in there to build?
Yes.
Okay. May I, just a question. I'm sure the sewer district said they have capacity to be able to handle that. Do we have the capacity to handle that wastewater at the end, at the end?
Oh, yeah.
We have, uh, uh, we, the door doubled our, our capacity, and, you know, we're selling about six hundred thousand gallons of water a day. They can then probably eight hundred thousand, so we're taking, we're taking this to the, we have the capacity. Their capacity's in the pipe side.
Yeah, as I say, the sewer district's capacity is our capacity, they send it all to us.
Yeah.
So they have the freedom to say that they can do whatever.
Yeah, but we treat it all.
Anyways. Sorry.
If you haven't seen the new sewer plan, it's me. So, uh, what other questions do you have for the Mills Brothers, all the damn engineer? John, so we're going to take, we're just going to take you guys just a minute, we're getting, let's, let's finish with the...
Does any of the council have any more questions of the developers?
I, I was just curious, you know, you, you mentioned commercial property, what, do you have any idea what kind of, of conversion?
As of right now, we've, the only thing that we're, you know, our knowledge is, would be the, we'd like apartment bulk storage, kind of a, you know, covered type deal, where you, you come right in off that main entrance, and it would basically, that would be some of that open space there for that, which would be, you know, fenced in. Not, not totally enclosed like Mr. Lawrence's property on the, the main street there, but that type of setting would, would be back through RVs and buses and stuff.
Just, would that detract from the property being...
Well, it's a healthy thing, but, but, uh, that's, that's, you know, we're in the very, very beginning of planning stages and just talking, but yes, there ain't going to be nothing, I, I say.
Anything else?
I, I don't have a question, I think it's more of a statement, and it's a little bit of an impasse for me personally, because I think you can look at it both ways. I know to your comment about the comprehensive plan, the issue with that statement is that comprehensive plan is for the city of Scottsburg. This is not in the city, nor will it ever be in the city. And that's a little bit of the issue that I have in even talking about this today. None of you in this room can vote for any of us, that's just the reality of it. We have a fringe, two-mile fringe, that we put forward, so it is our fault that none of you guys can vote for us, that we won't vote for us. However, this is not the intended purpose of the two-mile fringe, um, that's kind of just a side effect of it. So, again, I don't have a question, uh, but it's more of just a statement. I know similar council members felt the same way, is the two-mile fringe in two-mile radius was not intended to have control over parts of the city that we don't have control over, or have plans to annex in the future, right? That's not, uh, an option here. So whether I agree or disagree with the, the product and the projects, um, that's a little bit of my personal impasse on, as far as where I stand on it, but I just felt like that was worth stating, as we go on to some questions.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for that, thank you. Okay, I'll just open the Stucker phone.
No, I think we're ready for the Stucker phone.
Yeah, I think I've got one.
Okay.
Um, what's the county commissioners and the county council think of this? Are they in favor of it, or...
They, we, I mean, they don't go for, does this guy's go before them?
I understand, but they're bound, they're bound to have an opinion on it.
I haven't heard from any of them. Have you heard from any of them?
No.
Have you guys heard it from him? I have not heard it from any of the commissioners or the council.
The mayor hasn't heard anything from you.
Okay, so it is, they, you know...
But what I'm saying is, it's like what Christian was saying.
Right.
I have the same issue that Christian just said, I think I've said that a couple times. And, but, you know, the, the council and the commissioners had opportunity to come and speak at two planning commissions.
And some of them weren't there for the...
But they didn't speak, really.
Right.
And they didn't poison opinion.
Yes, so shut up.
And each of us, our, our numbers are available to call, so I, I don't know that, I guess my issue is the, is the fringe, and, and just, if this was going to be just like all the other developments around Vianna, it, it'd be a no brainer, or if this development was right next to the city limits, it'd be a no-brainer for me. And I've struggled with this from day one. That just, that's my statement, and I, you guys, I've been very aboard with you from the beginning, so... Uh, but I think it's time to hear from the folks.
Okay, folks, the way this is going to go, we're going to give you three minutes. I'll time it here, when you get three minutes, then, uh, we want, have enough time for everybody to speak if you want to speak, okay? So who would like to go first, if you wouldn't mind to state your name as well? Please, go ahead and stand up, state your name.
Yes, sir. My name's Steve J. Brannenbergh. I live directly across from the proposed subdivision from Vianna Road. The gentleman has made changes, he did listen to us. I feel that the board we, we proposed to before listened to us. You made changes in traffic that we're very concerned about. You did, you took that off Vianna Road, you took the one away from my driveway, thank you personally. But you created another common sense problem that you're on three fifty-six. Now, I'm going to not talk about that, because NDOT's going to take care of that, I'll go with their decision, but they're also the folks that came up with all the roundabouts too, I'll let you say that too, so we're aware of that. But we can't vote. We are in limbo on this. We can come, we can complain, and hopefully we can raise concerns, which we did. Sir, I'm still looking for that, that endangered toad over there on Vianna, I'm still looking. But we had some concerns that we brought up to you, and they were very valid concerns. But I have a question, and it goes right along with what you're saying. Since I have no representation, I have to trust you. And my understanding, and I don't, I didn't get a nice little packet from the board, and Mr. Mayor, we need to get you a gavel, your hand is going to be sore when you're not having it and doing this. But it says on this, and I'm assuming that you as legislative body shall pay reasonable attention to the same five charges that we had before the other councils, is that correct? That it follows the comprehensive plan? It does, I won't, I won't deny that, anything could follow a comprehensive plan pretty well as it's written. The current conditions and the character of the existing structures. We all have one acre of water. We got you to move it from the size of the IU basketball court to a quarter of an acre, we did, and you did. But that still doesn't reflect the existing structures there. That is my concern. It also does not address the character of this area. This is a little community. A lady in the council said, well, you'll like the crowd, you can go next door and, and borrow a cup of sugar if you run out. Everybody in here, you gonna loan me a cup of sugar if I show up at your door? Bill Horn sitting here pushes my mower out of the ditch, because we don't have good drainage in Vianna. We argued with this engineer till he's probably tired of us. I get my mower stuck because it's wet. But I'm not going to give any more suggestions, ask any more questions except this one. We've told you why we feel we don't want it. We've brought up those situations. I have one question, and I really don't know who to address it to, so I'm going to address it to you, sir, in good faith, and I'm going to put it before the mayor and anybody else. We've talked about what's in it for you, obviously you got to get your money back. Some of us have been against you, we couldn't afford it. I wanted to put a geriatric farm there, so people with memory loss could come and farm, we could grow pumpkins for the school. I didn't have enough money to do it. One of the gentlemen the other night said he wanted something creative, and he said you were creative. With all due respect, sir, it's a subdivision, it's a high-density subdivision, it's not... creative. But my question for you or anybody else, what does it do for Vianna? I know what it does for extra housing, but I can drive out here in my car, I'll take you with me, and we can find apartments, we can find a duplex, we can find houses pretty quickly. What does it do for those of us who love Vianna? And I'll take my question and cede my time.
Thank you. Oh, you're for me.
Thank you. Somebody answer me, please, not everybody would, I'm a school teacher, I can make questions.
Who's next? Yes, sir.
Yes, I've, I've tried to evaluate everything.
Give us your name.
A great, who's that?
Yeah, give us your name.
Okay, oh, Tom Craig.
Yes, Tom Craig.
You guys done a great job, I would've done the same way that they did, I would've come in and asked for a thousand new homes, okay, we'll take it down to a hundred and then everybody be happy. I agree completely with what she said, the character of this neighborhood, I would've been okay at one acre per residence. They came in and asked a whole lot more and we thought, oh, we made some gains with them, and maybe it's okay now. We're still not down to one acre per residence. And, you know, and as far as trust in what they say in here verbally, I was here also when they bid on the property. Everybody asked me, well, what are you gonna do with that of all this one property for our own reason? Well, I think I'm gonna build a house in the middle of, you know, I've always wanted plenty of land around me, and that's why I bought it. Well, I don't think so. So I don't trust anything they, they tell me anymore, if it's not on paper, then you can hold it to them, hold it to them. As far as their price targets, who knows what the price targets they're gonna have? We don't know what the market's gonna be, we don't know what house, kinda house are they gonna build, so, again, I wouldn't trust them far as I can throw them. But again, the character of the neighborhood is what I'm concerned about, I live about three tenths of a mile from, from this big development, and it certainly won't do me any favors if they have all those rentals in there and, um, lack of control of who comes in and who leaves, and that's all that.
Thank you, Mr. Tom Craig. Who's next, please? Give us your name first.
Tricia Burnout, can you tell me through this?
Yes.
And, um, what else you want?
That's good.
Okay. I've walked that area mushrooming and it's very wet, and she spoke to just the general wetness of the area. You start putting, um, high density, uh, houses close together, you're really gonna increase the drainage. With any rain, when you drive down three fifty-six, a little bit past the school, you see the ditches are full, logs are floating out, the ditch along thirty-one is full and flooding. And I really think it's going to be quite a water drainage problem just because there must be natural springs there, it's gonna be a management problem with the water. Secondary, second thing is with railroad tracks and the school, you have going to work traffic that's gonna be increased from this development, you're really gonna have a wind dog, I think, because they stop traffic till like the school buildings are doing out, which they should, stop traffic from the railroad tracks, a little train. So I'm concerned about traffic issues. And you mentioned something about a two mile radius, I didn't, I don't know what that means, two mile radius around the proposed area.
Not the proposed, there's a two, there was an ordinance passed last year, or.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty, um, in which we adopted a two mile radius around the incorporated limits of the city, in which we would have planning and zoning jurisdiction over that even though it wasn't within the incorporated limits, not the property, the entire city.
If it's not contiguous, I mean, doesn't it?
So it's two miles, and then we also have to provide city services.
Sort of areas.
Yeah, yeah.
But it would not be city property.
No, no.
Correct.
It can't, yeah, we cannot, we cannot annex unless we board the city limits, okay?
Clarify.
But that's the reason my statement, if this was next to the city limits, this is a no brainer.
Right.
So in, in some places, you have a drainage sewer system, and I don't know where it goes, I know we used to just build when all the kids dams to catch water that's all going downhill, float your little homemade boats in it, but, um, I think that there's going to be quite a lot of drainage to deal with, because you're taking a wet area and not allowing it to drain naturally, so you're gonna have increased drainage going downhill towards Vianna and all the people that live downhill, um, what's that road?
Three fifty-six.
And the road.
Vianna.
Vianna Road, three fifty-six, and starting on, so, that's it.
Thank you very much.
Can we address that issue? Do you want to address that issue of waters, the detention issue?
Yeah, sure. So, you know, in areas like this, most of the time what we do is we create a, what we call a stormwater detention basin, uh, which I explained at the last meeting, uh, but it's, we basically control the outlet, the, the flow of the stormwater after a rain, we control everything that's created by the development, so the roads and the roofs from the homes, we store all that in, in the detention basin temporarily and it slowly drains out. So, I've designed these basins for years and years for developments just like this and in much, much more challenging areas, denser areas in the city, excuse me, where we, where we really have to watch for flooding downstream, so, uh, this basin will just be mowed, it'll look like, it'll look like green space, it'll look like lawn, uh, but it will be created in a way where it will have a controlled outlet structure, it'll have a downstream berm that will allow the natural flow of the water to continue through the property, but in a heavy rain, it will control the excess runoff, if that makes sense. So, you will have water pone up behind this berm and it will slowly release, so you don't have the impacts of flooding downstream. But it's all done with, with grading, uh, and it'll look like a natural green space area when it's not raining.
And to that point, one of the concerns, again, going back to my previous statement, is if this were to come to fruition, the drainage ordinance or the drainage plan would not be adopted by us, it would be county, which has a drainage board, so, again, we're talking about an issue that we would ultimately be approving or, or shooting down, to which we don't have drainage control over, which is what we're addressing in the city right now, we're actually trying to adopt the new drainage ordinance, because I'm sure many of you drive in the city when it rains and we have the similar issue. So we're, uh, we're undergoing that right now, that would be another concern is, obviously with not, us not having control of the property, then we ultimately can't put either less or more stringent drainage requirements on there, so it's just a layer.
And drainage and utility concerns go in front of the development plan for approval, back to APC if this were to pass here, so that's a different part of the process.
Right.
We'll also have to submit a plan to the county stormwater district as well as I D E M, because they regulate anything that stormwater is, of course, maintaining that quality of stormwater off of a site, there's, that's a natural drain in there, that's a, that's considered a, uh, you know, that'll have to be protected with buffers.
Right.
On each side of that natural stream and approved again by I D E M, so, there's lots of agencies that'll be looking at this as we go through that.
Right, and I'm not saying it's good, bad, or indifferent, it's just, there's so many layers of this thing.
Yeah.
That it's with, this property being the proximity that is, with us having jurisdiction and then the county having jurisdiction, I D M has jurisdiction over just about everything, but neither here nor there, that's just, it adds more layers to it, complicating.
What about the.
Protects, what protects the people out there. It protects the drainage because like you said, we have to go through so many.
It does, correct, but I think it goes back to the other concern too, right? It's like it's a double edged sword, you're right, but I also, also think if I have a property out there, who am I voting for that has control over the decision making process? Is it the city, which we're voting today, or the county which would adopt the drainage plan? So, see what I'm saying, like, it would be, if I'm going to the ballot box because I'm issue, I'm gonna have an issue with the frustration, and I only vote on one side of those and not us five, so.
Yes, wait, let me address one thing you said too, just a second, I'll, uh, Scottsburg does not have a combination of stormwater and sewage, some municipalities do that, but we do not, we have, we have just a fluent, you know, in our sewer, in our wastewater lines. And matter of fact, we've, we've lined probably ten to twenty thousand linear feet of those lines, so they can.
So you're saying that stormwater goes into the sewer?
No, I'm just saying, no, you misunderstood, the stormwater does not go into the sewer. There are some municipalities that it does, but Scottsburg is not a city that will take the stormwater with that, not at all, it's a totally different system, so.
What about the traffic? Traffic?
Okay, let's, let's go forward, we're taking, we're taking, we want to hear everybody. Yes, go ahead.
Melvin Craig, um, to that end, what you just said, um, I was gonna say, yes, thank you, no, miss, I'm sorry. What's, if, if this is not city property, then presumably we're not getting, the city is not getting tax revenues from this property, the county would. What's the benefit to the city of this project?
Well, the benefit would be utilities, utilities would be the benefit.
In new residents.
And in residents, it's invited.
Roll into the county and roll.
Right, right, and, and let's basically all do our shopping, regardless of where we live, in the city of Scottsburg, a lot of us, you go, I mean, there's money spent in the city.
Additional investments.
Yes, that would be.
There's no tax on it.
No, we, we.
Other than utilities.
Well, yeah.
And I have a, can I ask a question, do I still have time for the developer? You said sixty.
Real quick, though, and again, I don't wanna get into weeds because it's gonna get over my head, I will address the tax because even if it's in the county, the tax base as far as property tax assessment is kind of spread out through the county, so not necessarily from the city's perspective.
The county.
Gets into a little bit of a weeds, but there are more, I guess, pros to expanding the tax base than just necessarily collecting property tax revenue or income tax revenue from residents inside city limits versus outside city limits.
And it's good for the, it is good for the county and it's good for the, the school district.
Right, right, so, that kind of thing.
Um, so you mentioned sixty to sixty-five percent green space, but then, kind of in the same, somebody did, and then you kind of mentioned in the same breath, oh, well we have this retention area that'll all be, a lot of trees out there, so how much of that sixty to sixty-five percent is in that retention area? And how much is actually going to be spread throughout the properties so that it has trees throughout? Because I'm really concerned with all of this pavement, where right now, that's just all open space where trees can suck up the water, sorry, I'm a tree person, so, I wanna know, are there trees throughout this property? Or is it all gonna be concentrated around that retention area and on the buffers you're talking about?
Sure, yeah, so, as part of this package, what we've submitted is, is pretty detailed as far as the layout of the homes on each lot, uh, that meet the setbacks for the property lines that allow yard space and green space, as well as dedicated, uh, like landscaping, easement and buffer areas, uh, along the north side specifically, uh, where the single residential family homes will be built to maintain a natural free buffer that, in that area.
Okay, so I, I know that you're planning these houses.
Right.
And they'll have yards.
Right.
Are there trees in those yards?
Yes.
Trees here now, yeah, we're not going to clear cut, you know.
You're not gonna.
No, no, you can't, we're, you know, we're gonna check out some of them.
I'm gonna have him sign it.
I'm trying to clear cut on it. Uh, no, but anyway, no, there'll be trees there, there's lots of trees, you know, and some of them you have to, but infrastructure.
Um, can I also ask a quick question on the eighteen patio rooms? Is that eighteen buildings with two units each?
Yes.
Okay, so it's really thirty-six residences?
Yes, I think we'll do it that way, thirteen units in all of those.
Thank you.
Just to address the tax issue, if you took a mean of two hundred and fifty thousands, I'm, I'm hearing three hundred thousand homes, these other, just take a time, six of that fifteen million dollars assessed value the county would, not the city, the county. Right. Okay, we have, our next, who's next? Please, over here.
Hi, I'm Amy Nichols.
Amy Nichols, okay.
I have just a couple of things, the nature of the community, we need to consider the nature of the community, we're a farmland community, what is that gonna do to the surrounding farms, the congestion and things like that? Also, the crime rate with the additional residents, what will the crime rate be and the policing be like at that point, what's the ratio, I'd like to have something, property values, what's gonna happen to our property values? We all live here, we've moved into the community that we're in because it's a farm community, it's, you got a few people who own more than thirty acres, I'm sure, so what are we gonna do with the property values? Have anybody assessed that, do we have any findings of what that's gonna do to our values? My daughters also go to the school, so I'm a little bit concerned about what's gonna happen at the school.
Thank you, Miss Amy. Do you have anything else?
No, I just wanted to, did my head any answers?
Thank you.
No answers?
Who's next, who would like to speak next? Here, yes.
My name's Rose Paskey, and, um, I had a question about Mr., what Mr. Mills said, is there going to be an absolute guarantee that there's no subsidized housing in this development? Because, and, and the reason I say that is that thirty years ago, on the nineteenth of May, I moved here specifically, uh, to Vianna because it was a, an agricultural community, because I came from the east coast, largest city on the east coast, and I came here to be in a small community and, um, and to have nice neighbors, which we do. So I'm very concerned about subsidized housing and, and increased crime rate.
There is a subsidized stuff that I don't know, you know, and, and the old plan that the attorney, you know, and all that, that's all the details obviously are, are in there, but the answer's no, no, there's, that's, these type of properties are not, uh, you know, it's not, but anyway, all the details are in the, the whole presentation.
But you can't, but not a chapter, chapter eight, is it? Thousand?
We're gonna sell houses two hundred and eighty thousand, June ninety, you know, that's how much the house costs.
The duplexes.
No, the duplexes, they're, they're, they're the same way, if we would sell one half, it would be right at probably two fifty, two seventy, with just one half of it.
But you're not selling, but you're not selling those.
That's what I'm talking about, I'm saying, if I rent, if I would sell, I can, if we did sell, I'm just telling you the value of it. And in the present, especially if you're gonna send the pictures of it in the square feet, um, uh, you know, it's, it's not, I'm not gonna throw rocks off anybody but this, you know, or to any other, uh, these are not, uh, cheap built properties that are not, that are gonna be, you know, uprooted, I guess, I don't use that word either.
You guys are guaranteeing market rate above.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't want, yeah, I don't want to sound like, hey, you know, a thousand dollars, but they're gonna be very, uh, a lot higher end than, than a lot of some areas, some I can go there.
Well, I used to be a landlord and I was told you can't deny chapter eight.
That's, that's, but, uh, there are prices, you've still gotta pay the landlord.
They'll be, they'll be.
Thank you, let's, let's go to the next, who's next, of course, yes, over here. Yes, please, what's your name, hon?
My name's Robin Smith.
Robin Smith, okay.
And we own the ten acres that are at the north side of this property, so the whole north side of it, we own, we bought it right next to it. So the single family homes are gonna be towards the front part of the property, there you said, I think a twelve foot buffer, correct, with trees? Our barn is right up next to the property line, basically. So there is gonna be several lots of these single family homes, so when they open their door to look in their backyard, they're gonna see the side of our barn, which is a two story barn, it's a nice barn, we like our barn, but I'm sure they will not, they will not like opening their door to see the back of our barn. And so I really have a little concern about that, we also have animals in our barn, we have a tractor in our barn, we have a working farm moving on, you know, and are these people that are moving in, I mean, they may wanna be moving to the country, but are they really ready for the country? You know what I mean, are they gonna wanna hear our chickens, you know, early in the morning, crowing, or they wanna hear the tractor going at six AM?
Do they wanna smell your manure?
That's right. We have bees also, we have eleven hives, uh, we have honey, uh, we sell at the farmer's markets, you know, we like to do all this stuff, we like the way our life is, we like to have agricultural life, you know, and like I said, a lot of these people are gonna think, oh, I wanna move to the country, but do they really know what the country is like?
Problems in progress when they will do find out, they don't wanna live beside that, I mean, that's gonna change the way we live or cause turmoil between us and our new neighbors, you know, I mean, it's.
Also, as far as the drainage, we are north of the property, but all the water drains north, so all the water off this property is going to drain on us first. Now, there's three major areas where the water drains on, up at the road, at Vianna Road, right at the corner, water drains on Tar Pocky. Also, midway back, there is an underground stream, and there's sinkholes back there, which continue on. Also, midway back, there is an underground stream, and there's sinkholes back there, which continue on to their property, so they're gonna have a lot of sinkholes through there. I don't know if that's gonna be their houses in the future, I don't know, but there is a lot of sinkholes through there, and there's an underground stream. On back is where they're gonna do the water retention pond, and there's drainage back there too, and I believe on back, past our property, on to this gentleman's property, there is a watershed going on back. But, you know, where are we gonna do with the water through the middle of our property that comes off it and the front of the property? You know, we have a retaining pond in the back of the property, which is a lot of water there too, but it's just, there's just a lot of questions, you know? And there's not gonna be as much green space, like everyone was saying, you know, there's gonna be a lot of concrete, there's gonna be a lot of roads, a lot of houses, so the water right now goes into the ground and it soaks out slowly. You know, what's gonna happen later? And how are we gonna stop, you know, as far as the underground stream? I mean, will that be cut off so it won't be going through our property anymore, if they're gonna redirect it to the back, or how will that hap-? And there's a big dip, the plant is not flat, halfway back, there's a huge dip, it looks like a front row that's flat, but it's not, there's a huge dip, you could drive a school bus into and you wouldn't see the school bus anymore, and then it comes back out. So a lot of these houses, you know, will be going down into this dip, or they don't level it all out, you know, make it like a retaining wall. I don't know, I'd love to do a walking tour with you guys along the proper line.
Thank you very much.
We'd like to address those setbacks with engineer.
Okay.
Most setbacks, concerned about setbacks and above.
Yeah, those, those single family homes at the north side of the subdivision, if the order, their property, they're a hundred and forty feet in length. It's a twenty-five foot setback for the homes, so those homes aren't gonna be sitting right on the property, and there's plenty of space there. You're, you're probably gonna have a sixty to seventy foot backyard plus a twelve foot natural tree buffer in the back, so.
Twenty-five plus twelve, or is that twelve and the twenty-five?
It's twelve foot and just neutral area, just, it's nothing, and you have the, the lot from the house, I don't see it in the insurance, sixty to seventy feet from the back door to the end of their property. You know, they'll have another few feet to their barn, it's a good distance there.
Right here.
My name's Nora Cornet, and I own the property east of their property. I have ninety-three acres there, sixty-five acres or till. The back floods, it gets very wet back in the back, if you guys wanna come out, I'll take you back there, let you look at it. Lost part of the creek that comes down because of the flooding. Me personally, I don't believe for a minute that the homes you're wanting to sell, anyone would want to drive through storage units to get to their home, especially a two to three hundred thousand dollar home. And I don't believe for a minute that, and I don't mean to make you, that these are not gonna be rental properties because.
They're not.
Well, I don't believe that. And I'd like to, I'd like to know who's funding this? Is it federally funded? Do you have any partners? Do you have other facilities? Do you have other places like this in other parts of the Kentucky or Indiana? This is your first?
Hold on, hold on one second. Hold on, this, I understand your edith's concern, and it's, it's right to ask questions, however, we are here to rezone, approve or rezone from ag to PUD. So as far as those questions are concerned, I'm not gonna say they're off limits, you can certainly ask these guys if you guys want to answer it, but I don't know that this is the form.
Not in this form.
Address it. But I, but, and to clarify, I know there's probably some frustration in this room, because there are a lot of questions, a lot of valid questions, and we don't have answers. The reason we don't have answers is what I alluded to earlier, a lot of it's without our control. We've talked about drainage, a lot about drainage. Again, that will go to the county drainage board. We do not have a drainage board, in the same order we have jurisdiction over the property. So, I understand the frustration, I feel the frustration, because I'm equally as frustrated because of the issue with where it's located. Again, I'm not gonna say it's a good, good project or not, but again, that's that layer that we're talking about, is we ultimately don't have much control other than voting on this rezone, and after that, you guys are county residents again. So, that's just.
I, I would just like to say, I've lived on my home for forty-seven years. Raised a daughter, raised a granddaughter. And I cannot imagine that next door to me, because, and, and from what I've heard, it's gonna be the biggest. What's? Subdivision in the county. And of all places to put it, in the middle of a little small Mayberry town, I, I just really upsets me, and, and I, I would like to know about sidewalks? Just one road in bothers me because I hear more tires squealing when I'm opening the shop, people slowing down and screaming at each other, and it's horrible, the traffic on our road is horrible. And they speed in that thirty and forty mile. It's useless. So, you know, it really is.
But sidewalks are required in our subdivision control ordinance?
Thank you.
This is. Yeah, there's, there's, there's eighty-some odd in Scottsburg right now, so I mean, this subdivision is not. Jan, I, Jan, go right ahead.
Jan Waterston, I'd like to say, own the property just north of there. My main question is, is I understand that the county commissioners have nothing to say about this once you vote on it. Is that correct? They don't have to meet the board? And going back to the drainage, an old geologist years ago informed me that that's glacier till. When I put in my basement, I got some beautiful bowers that I know came from Michigan and from the iron country. There's a sand thing that she talks about in the sinkhole, because all that water drainage comes down across the bend, makes it a whole lot wider. So there's, there's, this is not standard soil. This is glacier till. And you're liable to have quicksand, or you're liable to have total clay. So, you know, that's something that the, somebody needs to look into, but I'm more concerned about the, anything that the commissioners can say or to, to forward this or stop it.
What's at the bottom of the sinkhole?
Huh? What's at the bottom of the sinkhole? Sinkhole, when I was putting in wells when I was a kid, usually sand, you'll have, you'll have quicksand down about eighteen foot, twenty-five foot in this area.
We can't drink water, we can't drink water.
Yes, please stand up and listen, what is your, state your name, please.
My name's Doris Carr, and I've been in Vianna since nineteen sixty-three, which I've told several people. And I did, I agree with BJ a hundred percent. Everything she said is absolutely true. But there's one thing that concerns me more than anything else. When this ground was auctioned off, the people that were at the auction said that the tanks were completely safe, they're filled with sand. That's not true, we've been lied to several times, and I think these guys were lied to. I am more concerned, I, my husband had cancer. And this, this is what concerns me more than anything, the safety. We need to be assured before any voting, I, I disagreed with the voting the other night because I don't feel like it's a legal thing to vote until it's ready to be built on. It's not nearly ready to be built on. Those tanks are gonna have to come out of there. And there's gonna have to be new soil cut around them. Because we've had some communications ourselves. And then, you know, then's the time to vote on it, once it's legal, and we've all been assured that it's legal. Does that make sense? I think every one of you sitting there would want that next to you. I just live two doors down from where these tanks are.
Thank you, Ms. Carr.
That's all the time I'm gonna take.
Yes, sir, go ahead, sir.
James Carr, this is my mother, she missed a few spots. Here, and here it does these figures and everything on his drainage. There's a spring that runs under that road. Gasoline went into those wells to the west. We know this. You guys were lied to when you bought it. And one of the guys at the other council said he knew about this, he's a liar, he wasn't known enough to know this. See, they're laughing, they know, I'm telling you the truth. People got very sick from this, pay attention.
Thank you, sir, who's next, yes, ma'am.
Our well was contaminated and we had to go on city water.
There's a well right next to our place also, my name's Daniel Smith, by the way, I'm a father's husband, we live there on the north side. There's a well right next to us, Lawrence Palmer is the guy who owns the house next to us, used to be part of our property, it was a parsonage, now it's his house, but he has a well that can be tested to see if there is still contamination in that water. Also, something off that subject, the agricultural part of it, you guys were talking about. A couple of years ago, I wanted to get into rabbits, and I went out to Slade Road and bought some rabbits off a guy who had to sell all of his rabbits because a zoning committee came by, just drove by his house and rezoned his house without him knowing it, I don't know if he had the opportunity to find out and told him. But he could rezone it back to agriculture if he wanted, it cost him ten thousand dollars. What's the chances of them doing that to us, because we are agricultural, and as most people here know, that we farm on our property, it's an active farm, we have, basically, bees are considered livestock. So we have lots of livestock on our property, lots of chickens and everything else. What's the chances of them just driving by, rezoning us and saying, hey, well, if you wanna keep doing your chicken business, that you have to pay us ten thousand dollars to rezone your property? Probably more, because we live more property business, it's just a small place that was in a residential area. And I, I'm concerned that, and I know the city council doesn't have any power over that, but you might have knowledge, that, that might help with, at least our comfort in this whole decision. What ramifications it could have on us in the future as far as our agricultural business goes?
Is it okay if I check this one?
Yeah.
Okay, so city council does have a little bit of power over that, actually, so, first of all, if they wanted to rezone your land, you would get a public notice about it, just like you have with these meetings. But this is a rezone hearing here, what we're doing. So at the end of the day, if this were to happen again, and say that someone wanted to rezone your land, or the city wanted to, they would first go through APC, you all would get notified like you did there, and then the APC would make a recommendation to council, which is why we're here tonight. So the same process would go on, you all would also get notifications, correct me if I'm wrong, Josh, but we, yeah.
But it's totally possible that just because they rezone that to residential, that eventually, they're gonna want to expand the residential area there and make that whole Vianna, just a giant residential area, and, and just do away with the agricultural.
Typically, a property owner applies for resuming, not a government.
Yeah, I don't think, I, I, since, I, I cannot think of a time that we have sought a rezone as a city entity.
Listen, Janet has, you're right over this young lady here, what is your name, please?
Me?
Yes.
Mary J. McGarvey, technically, I am not a resident, I am a property owner, I have invested interests, my family's been here for generations, but I just have some questions. So I understand, it's our duty, do we have a housing crisis in Scott County? Do we need more houses, just a question?
We're building two hundred fifty homes right now.
Okay.
There's been, there's been a hundred and seventeen sold since I've come in office.
About what's been the price point on those?
One seventy-five to three hundred.
Okay, so I just, I wondered, because the median income in Scott County is forty-five thousand. So the average Scott County resident cannot afford these. So my question to the developers is, if you guys, you know, you're talking about building a couple at a time, if you can't sell these, what's the plan? Because I'm, I'm also asking this because we had this fringe question, and that's what got us here. I don't want there not being able to sell stuff to get us in another sticky situation, so I'm just trying to understand.
Well, I mean, you know, with any spec house, or this stuff like this, there was obvious pain business risk, you know, but we know enough that we'll say, and from our opinion, that we obviously wouldn't be trying to make this commitment. That didn't manage there, and it wouldn't work, you know, if it didn't have, you know, didn't fill that way, we definitely wouldn't take that risk or, or stuff like that. But we, we definitely know that, you know, if it's there, we'll, we can do it, we can do it. So that's, our, our study, our opinion, that's probably believable.
At two hundred thousand, forty-five, that, that is totally in Vianna, that, that price, good, yeah. Anything else?
Got one more question.
Okay, yes, I'm sorry, Janet, go ahead, buddy.
Nobody answered about the commissioners, but I do know the commissioners want to develop, want this have a bond that the company has to put up to make sure that everything they say they're gonna do gets done. I didn't know whether the city had talked about doing that, to guarantee some of us people that the sidewalks will go in, the roads will be blacktop, the trees will be planted.
Josh, I'll let you handle it.
There is a bond requirement, I'm trying to look right now to tell you how much it is, but there is a requirement.
And so the county has nothing, the commissioners have nothing to say about this, I mean, they don't, yeah, I didn't have two cents or anything.
Yeah, there, the commissioners' two cents, if you will, would come from, they have two appointed members to the advisory planning commission, so that's where they would be able to kind of pull their weight if they want to.
Yes, well. So. Janet, yes. I'm sorry, yes, go ahead, what is your name, please?
My name is Sunday Broaddus Crude, I am with Vianna Fire Department. Have you guys considered what this is gonna do to a volunteer fire department, let alone our EMS, who struggles a lot of times to have enough employees, and to our county sheriff's department? Is anybody taking that into consideration? Because you're gonna add another, let's say you're looking at sixty houses, probably another three or four hundred people into there, which we struggle now to have enough members of our volunteer fire department to make the runs that we have. So has anybody considered any of that? Because now it becomes the wellness of our community as far as their health and their fire coverage.
Thank you. Next?
Yes. Just a quick follow-up to Dan's point, I think you're gonna set precedent. And by lowering the requirement zoning up, you know, two miles from the city, someone next to them say, hey, we wanna do that too, we wanna put in fifty houses on twenty acres, or whatever it may be, because they did it. I mean, it'd be an awfully good argument for someone else to choose to continue that, it's just not a, not a good feeling.
Thank you. Next, yes.
So, following the news, you get pretty nervous looking at, you know, budgets and the debits and what's gonna happen to the national financial plan, which all of it, of course, affects loan, interest loans, interest rates, you know, availability of money. I just, what happens to this area if this development is not successful? Who bites, who gets the hurt as far as expenses? Will there be taxes raised to cover expenses that the city or the county will pay out?
No, whoever they would, if they would borrow, if they borrow money, we don't know if they're gonna pay for it, just borrow, it'd be the bank. Okay, anything else? Who else?
Mrs. Mayor? I started this, and I'd just like to say that I asked a question, and I didn't get a bedlam of answers, and I didn't even get an answer, nobody has told me how this helps Vianna. All I've heard are concerns, and I don't wanna kick a dead horse, but this horse is very alive, how does this help Vianna? I'm waiting.
We're not here to answer, we're here to listen.
Okay, but, but Mr. Mills, and it says, I believe, in, when I read this, it says it, it has, doesn't have to, but it should enhance the character, and it should bring value to the community. That's all I'm asking, I just wanna know what value's coming to my community, simple question, we've heard all the negatives, I just want one positive.
I can tell you, from my experience, is when you, when you put fifteen million assessed value in there, everybody's house is gonna go up.
But I had three realtors over the weekend talk to me about my house, sir. It went down. Maybe they don't know what they're talking about, I don't know, maybe I don't know what I'm talking about, but you, sir, have given one thing, can you give me one? Okay, he's talking to me and talking.
We're doing the, are we ready? Because I think everybody's spoken multiple times.
Yeah, I think so.
So, I mean, we, you know, we, at this point, I think the council needs to disclose, so. So, I mean, we, you know, we, at this point, I think the council needs to close, to close the open session. That way we can decide and make our decision.
Did I ask this? The traffic problem is going to be bad, are you all, who's going to handle the traffic?
Anyway, we're, this is, then we're going to close it up. That's NDOT. NDOT handles all it. They're coming right off the highway and it's NDOT's issue.
It's the state issue.
It's the state. It's, it's NDOT, it's Indiana Department of Transportation. That's, they're going, they handle all that. So... One question. Yes? If you don't build houses there, it's zoned agricultural, right?
Yes.
Would it be like a hog processing plant be put in there to, to generate the...
That'd be industrial. Farmer.
That would be industrial. Okay. Okay. Just one, just...
Oh, yeah, that's a good question. They would have to come and see the question.
Let me say thank you for telling us your concerns, uh, your, your interest in these things. So it's been very helpful to the councils to try to, to have a make decisions in these areas. So, uh, well, that said, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fifteen is before. Uh, here's our motion to, uh, go forward with ordinance twenty twenty-three fifteen on first reading only.
We have to make a motion to get to a vote regardless. So I'll make the motion until we get to the vote.
Christian Evans makes the motion to go forward with ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fifteen. And, uh, here, is there a second? I'll second, so if we get to the vote. Chris Alfredson's second says, any questions come as concerns? Bring that, all in for a CI.
To, to, to get the vote.
This is not for the vote, correct?
That's what, that was the vote.
Right now.
This is a motion to approve, sir.
This is a motion to approve, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Let's make sure we, we understand, we have a, we have a motion.
We have a motion to second, so we're voting.
So now we're voting. So, go ahead. Call the vote.
So, on the motion, on the ordinance twenty twenty-three dash fifteen, we have a motion to go forward. And all in favor say aye. All opposed say aye.
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 Vote for you, we would.
Twenty twenty-three dash fifteen. You guys want some free honey?
I want to say to the developers, guys, I understand you want to bring homes to our community and I get it. But there's, from, on my vote, I can just say, I'm not elected by these folks. It does change the community of Vianna quite a bit. And, uh, just those two things, I just couldn't, I just want you to be aware.
But let me, let me step out here too and tell y'all, in this whole fringe subject where I couldn't come to the county commissioners and for them to come to y'all and be that buffer, we didn't have that option. You know, I had no time to sit down with you and tell you what we've, what some will have, because of our place. You know, I didn't know you until we met, you know, knowing any of y'all.
Shouldn't have gone some doors these directions. I mean, you did. My first step and told me that you guys were going to live there and manage all those properties yourselves, that was your retirement plan. And I just can't see anybody with, with common sense wanting to live with a hundred and eleven families, okay? But...
We can't go to, you know, commissioner and talk to them, let them get some, you know, and have this report. We've done this in two meetings with you and some others, okay? We can't come to the city council and do this either, you know? And where now, it's really, you know, a sticky subject, you know? You know, business is business. I ain't got no, you know, I got no motion about this, it's business. But still, it's very, uh, uh, you know, put us in a, you know, in a deal where, you know, you can't really present everything. You know, you present, you've got a million questions that is already answered, already laid out, it's clear as, uh, as all get out and it's very good. But we didn't have that option to talk to y'all and it's unfair for y'all. And we didn't, you know, and so we're kind of caught in the middle of this whole mess too, and it's not going to be fun.
I agree.
We, we would have met with you. Yeah, yeah, but, but you're saying that the stuff...
They should provide a process.
Yeah, we did a process.
They should provide a process for us to have a buffer.
You could have had a family forum in my front yard, we all showed up and we listened.
So we need to, we need to move our council meeting on. I, I, I understand, I wanted to be just...
Yes, yes, we understand. There's frustration.
I understand that this whole thing has put you guys in a bad situation. And I understand that, but we'll, we'll talk about...
Nobody's in charge of a hundred percent of it.
Well, exactly. And that's, that's kind of where I am. And before, before, since, since I'm not, I'm not elected by these folks, before this, I could in good conscience vote to approve it. It'd have to be kind of a, kind of a slam dunk situation. But I, I, I understand your concern and I understand their concern. So we, we, we have a process, we need to work on that. And, and, and you got called in something that was never intended.
Yeah, because, because we spent all this money and done everything according to y'all's plan. Everything's according to the plan. We've got lawyers, we've got everything, this man over here is a pro, he talked about regardless of what these people think. And this man knows what he saw and he does this for a living, okay? Bottom line of it is, we come here with a plan, according to your comprehensive plan, screaming, we want houses, we want growth, we want to hire our kids moving to, to Sellersburg or Charles Town or moving to Indianapolis or... Where, where you at? Y'all got one, one percent growth here the last year. There's no housing here for these kids, man. I'm telling you, they're starving to death, boy. You want jobs coming here, you're going to have to work with developers like us to bring in infrastructure in here and keep your young people here, if not, you're a dying community.
I, I wholeheartedly agree, and I will say this because we do need to move on. Your, your project is a great project.
Sure is.
It's an absolutely great project. I don't care what anybody says. If this is in the city limits, I'll, I'll do flips, jump up and down and see what anything can do, because we have control over that. And I agree, it's not your fault, it's not these folks' fault. We have to take ownership of the process.
Yes, we have, when there's a problem.
We have to take ownership of the process. And I, every point you made, because the market, the, the rate that you're looking at is exactly what's missing in Scott County. It hasn't been for quite some time. And that's the only issue, if it was two miles, yeah, whichever direction within the city.
If it was right on the city board, there would have been a no brand.
If you want people to move here from this, from other areas, if you want people to move here, split that up, build three hundred thousand dollar homes and sell them on two acres, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. It's, it's the other stuff and, and the commercial stuff, but, you know, if you want to build nice homes.
They have a business plan. It's not us to tell them how to run their business. And so...
I understand that.
But, but I will say that we need to work on our process, because we do need to control the, the growth of the city. It has to be planned growth, but we need to figure out a different process. So we'll, our apologies for, to, to everybody that just created this, okay?
Well, I don't want them to think that we don't, I know it's, they're going to do something, but I feel like they could do better. I just feel like they could do better.
Okay.
With all due respect, do you all have more on the agenda?
We, we, we usually end with a few things.
Okay, then we need to be quiet and watch you all go on.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. I'm sorry, ma'am.
Welcome back to our podcast.
We're, yes, we were trying to get a date. Jill and I worked through that, we just didn't have enough time to get everybody together.
They have a baseball game tonight, I think, Mayor.
Yes, baseball as well, then. So we will get them.
They have a summer ball camp, so Christian will probably get them in here during then.
Jill, can you give us an update? And, and Mr. Lowery's here as well, can you give us an update, Mr. Lowery, on Mayberry, sir?
If things continue to go very, very well, and we have had one change, and I'm not sure if we're going to make a formal request tonight. I think we've got a couple of downtown folks we want to talk to. But, uh, we learned that we're going to have a car show on Saturday morning. And the gentleman that was helping lead that for us had some personal, family issues and we had to, he had to kind of step back and had to get somebody else to come help us. So we've learned that there are also shows Saturday morning in Charleston, or it's Saturday, in Charleston, Illinois, that are already established. And so it didn't make a lot of sense for us to try to have a show against two already established shows. So we have, uh, we're going to move that to Sunday. And we looked at the, the park out there, beach, we've made a tour there, and there have been shows out there before. We think that's going to work really, really well. The effect of that is that we may not, it may not be necessary or even appropriate for us to have that request for closing the streets all around the square for Saturday. We're considering perhaps amending that request to only closing Mordell Street. So we can still have some things in the street, have some place for some safety for folks to pass back and forth as things happen. Uh, I'm not sure that we, I'd like to have one more meeting, I'd like to then make that formal request at the next meeting after we talk to some of the downtown district folks, and just see what their thoughts are, you know, about those changes as we make that. But other than that, things are going really, really well. I continue to get calls from folks from, I think we're up to ten states now that folks are coming to town from. Uh, and so that, that's very exciting. And now all the rest of the, uh, logistics seem to be coming together very well. Jill and the city team are working really, really hard, as well as the folks from the county, to, to make all that stuff happen.
Can you, can you explain to the folks, I mean, just who's coming, some of the, some of the stars that were from Mayberry?
Well, Andy Griffith's daughter will be here, Don Knotts's daughter will be here. Uh, a gentleman named Dennis Rush, who played Obie's buddy Howie Pruitt in about ten episodes. Everybody probably remembers Howie Pruitt, he did the newspaper with Obie and, uh, Obie sold his bicycle to him back in, anyway. He'll be here. A lady named Margaret Carey, who, uh, was in two episodes of the Andy Griffith Show, but she's best known as being Disney's figure model for Tinker Bell. And that, uh, the Tinker Bell, the Peter Pan movie is celebrating its seventy-fifth anniversary this year. So she'll be here to help celebrate Disney and the Andy Griffith Show. Uh, I could go on, we've got nine different people who are either on the Andy Griffith Show or have, are related to the Andy Griffith Show that will be here joining us. And I think it's thirteen people who will come dressed up as characters from the show. Uh, who were actually on the show, will be portraying people like Floyd the Marver, Otis Cannibal, the town drunk, Ernest T. Bass, the crazy guy from the hills. And which reminds me, the one guy that I should be mentioning too, Rodney Dillard, who was the guitar playing darling boy, that crazy band of hillbillies that came down out of the hills to play bluegrass music. He's the last one living, still touring, and he'll be here with his band, he'll be doing a concert Saturday afternoon. And that's a big, he's a Grammy nominee, member of three halls of fame, a very, very influential musician, and he'll be here as well.
Can you tell us the dates?
The, the, the entire weekend of June the twenty-third to the twenty-fifth, we'll have activities starting on Friday night with a celebrity meet and greet dinner, auction, entertainment, et cetera. Big, big night Friday night, all day Saturday, and then most of the day Sunday till about four o'clock, Sunday, June twenty-fifth.
Amen, amen, thank you very much. Jill, what else do we have for them?
We need to meet real quick to try to schedule out some times for budget. Okay? We need budget workshops for the city. Um, treasurer, when do you want to try to get that done by?
We need to, just, we want to stick around after the meeting, try to coordinate schedules.
Yeah.
Um, there's going to be a lot of vacations in June. Last year we met early, so I just need to try to coordinate, just see what councils' budgets really are.
Okay. Can, can we do that, guy, or?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I need a motion adjourned. Please, please, motion adjourned, please adjourned, thanks very much.